Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We are here at Granbury City Hall, July the 17th, 2018. It's 6:01. The Granbury City Council regular meeting is now called to order. I'd like to point out that Councilman Allen is not with us at this time. He may be here later. I'd like to call upon our city manager, Chris Kaufman, to lead us in our implication, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Councilman Couch. All rise, please.
Do it. Bow with me. Prayer.
Father, we come to you today just to thank you for the life that you've given us through your son. Thank you for the opportunity together, together, to serve our community. Just thank you for the people represented in this room, that their hearts are in the right place to serve our community, that they're working hard to make Granbury better. We thank you for that. Thank you that we have a spirit of you within us in this place, and we pray that tonight we would be able to exhibit that spirit of love and hospitality to one another. And just thank you for the opportunity to serve, and just pray for each one of these council members as they make decisions tonight that would be based on the spirit led by you. And I just pray these things in Christ's name.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, without doubt, one and individual.
At this time in the council meeting, we have a presentation, a very special presentation today. We're going to have a presentation of a, to recognize my friend, and I know everybody in the community knows this guy, J.C. Campbell, for 40 years of service to the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department and for his dedication to the Granbury community. But J.C. Campbell has not only served in the fire department and his community, he's also, he's also served his family. He's raised a family, and I think most of his family are here with him tonight. He's been a husband to lovely wife Sylvia, who's here tonight. He's been a father, he's been a grandfather. And get me, are you a great-grandfather? He's a great-grandfather, too. So he has achieved all those milestones and has done a great job of that. He's also served the community in many ways. He's sat right up here at the dais. He's been a council member, and he continues to come up here and he continues to let me know. He says, "You know, Nen, I'm not in the city limits anymore, but I care about what's going on." And he truly does care about this community and what this community, and what direction this community goes. So we want to recognize him tonight especially for his 40 years on the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department. So if you could get J.C. to come on up here, and any of your family members want to come up here, too, come on up. And I'm going to give J.C. a chance to recognize all these family members here, okay?
I'll do it.[244.34][244.34](Laughter).
This certificate comes from the office of the mayor of Granbury, Texas, and it's a certificate of recognition proudly presented to J.C. Campbell in appreciation of his 40 years of continuous service to the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department and the countless hours dedicated to the safety and the welfare of the Granbury community. So it's given under my hand and the seal of the city of Granbury on this 17th day of July 2018, this certificate of recognition to J.C. Campbell.[276.83][276.83](Applause). And like I said, I'm going to have J.C. speak a little bit because I was going to talk a little bit about this because J.C. kind of went through how he became a volunteer fireman, and I would screw it up. So I'm going to let J.C. talk about this. I'm going to let him tell everybody in the community how he became a volunteer fireman for 40 years. It's a really interesting story, so, and at that time, I'd like for you to introduce your family there, if you would, please.
Two minutes? No, three, three minutes. Mr. Mayor, city council, and the city manager appreciate the opportunity once again to talk to you guys and to tell you about something that's dear to me. This city council is very dear to me. It's been quite a few years up there, and so you're very, you're very close to me. What you do, it affects me even though I live out of the city, you know? But it still affects me because I know where the city has come from, what we did not have. We were almost bankrupt one time, and we got a letter from the Attorney General of the State of Texas saying, "Get your business in order, or we'll take you in receivership." That's bankruptcy. But anyway, we've done it, and look at where you are now, where we are now, and it makes me very proud to know that we've got some councilmen that really has the city at heart. And so with all the hard work that you guys do, thanks. Mayor said, I told him about how I became a fireman. I was in the Hood County Volunteer Rescue Unit, and we formed in about 1968 when the lake came in because the fire department at that time didn't have the, didn't have enough people to handle the lake, if you had drownings or anything. And so they said, "We're not going to do that. We can't, we can't do it all." So we got a lot of grass fires. And they did have a lot of grass fires. In 1978, July the 4th, the city, the fire department had 26 fire calls that day. The Granbury Volunteer Fire Department answered 26 calls that day. Kelton Connor, who was the county attorney, he and I were at the, we were across the street over here where the fire hall and rescue hall used to be. It was an old lumberyard, and we used some of the bays over there for our storage equipment. But he and I was over across the street about 7 o'clock in the afternoon, 7:30, and here come this grass truck. This grass truck pulled up into the driveway and says, "We're looking for some firemen." I says, "There's no firemen around here." He said, "Just rescue people." "No, we're looking for some firemen. We need some help." I said, "Well, there's no firemen here, you know? We just got rescue people." He said, "Well, if you get on that truck, we'll make you a fireman." So Kelton and I looked at each other and said, "Okay, let's do it." So we got on the truck, and the next meeting, I went down and joined, and I think Kelton did, too, at the same time. So that was, July the 4th was when I consider I joined the fire department. My deal, my paperwork says something different. It's the latter part of the year, I mean, the next month, I think, when they had the first meeting. So it was, it's been quite a ride, and these guys back over here that's in the fire department, I really love them, too, because I told them I'm very proud of them for what they do. Because they're holding the tradition. The Granbury has always been a volunteer fire department for about 113 years now, 112 years, and that's, that really says something. We've never had a death that I know of. We've had two accidents. So they're very conscious, the training that they get, one of the first things that they do is they say, "Safety, safety, safety. If you don't get to the fire hall, you don't go to the fire. So if you have an accident, it's not good for you. Your fireman's not going to be any good," like that. So the fire department is real good about the safety of the firemen and the safety of the individuals that are out fighting fire and putting them out. And I, Bob, I think that the last meeting you told us that the response time was a little under five minutes, and that's from the time the alarm sounds till they're 10:08, they're on the road. So that's pretty good for a volunteer fire department. So I think we need to say thanks to them.[588.16][588.16](Applause). Oh, and Ms. Julia is an honorary fireman. She's, she said if I told her I was going to do this, we were going to do this tonight, she had wore a fire pin, so, but she didn't do it, so that's my fault, Julia. But I thank you all. This is, this is really, it's really an interesting thing that, you know, it's just, it's my honor to do this. I'd like now to introduce my family. I've got John is, John has got 13 years in the fire department, and Jerry has got 16 years in the fire department, and Joel, I think, has got 16 years in the fire department. So I think that's about 40-some-odd years.[636.54][636.54](Applause). The way they got started was in the rescue unit. When they got old enough, they joined the rescue unit, and then when we merged with the fire department, they went right over in it. So they've got those years in the fire department plus what they had in the rescue unit. So we appreciate it very much, and it's mine, or in my, I have my daughter-in-law, Monica Campbell, and my granddaughter, Margaret Ella, and she's the redhead in case you didn't notice it.[668.20][668.20](Laughter). But anyway, we're proud of her, proud of them, so we're proud of the whole family, and so thank you very much. I appreciate it.[675.16][675.16](Applause).
So that means Sylvia, you've got 170 years with the fire department, right?[687.41][687.41](Laughter) All those firemen there, okay. Yeah. Assistant fire chief at Lockheed. Very good, very good.[701.16][701.16](Laughter).
One of, one of the things that I did whenever I looked at becoming a fireman was, I went home and I asked her, I said, "Do you think you can handle us, handle me, if we can go to, if I can get in the fire department? Because you never know when you're going to have to get up and go." And she said, "Yes," so that was, that was a green light for me to join. But during the years over this thing, well, we've had two Christmases, not, not next to each other, but Jose's used to be a Mexican place down here by the beach, where the beach was, and then out where the discount tire was. Christmas Day, two years, had a fire. Jose's burnt. So Sylvia and the girls had fixed this lunch, this dinner, and the fire whistle blew, and we just got up and left. There was nobody but ladies there. So, you know, that's, that's, that's some of the pay that, that we need to say thanks to them for, and so I appreciate it. Again, thank you.[763.73][763.73](Applause).
Once again, thank you, J.C., and thanks to all the firefighters, the voluntary firefighters, for your service and what you do for the community also. So it just goes to show you, when you, watch out where you're, where you're hanging out at the 4th of July, because you may become a fireman or a fire lady, so thank you very much. I just love that part of the agenda where we get to recognize people in this community. It's a good thing. Now we're going to go into our consent agenda, that being first, consider approving the city council meeting minutes of July 3rd, 2018. The second being to consider adopting ordinance 1846, amending the general fund, utility fund, and the tourism fund budget for the fiscal year 2017, '18. And the third being consider approval of the expenditures for audiovisual improvements at the Lake Granbury Conference Center. And number four, consider approving of the expenditures for the city hall facility renovations. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over these consent agenda items. Are there any of those items that you wish to pull off the agenda or to make changes to? I will say that there's representatives for most of these items in the audience there if you need to talk to some people about that. If none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some move.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That consent agenda is approved. Next, we will move into our deliberation agenda. The first item being to discuss, consider the amount of hotel occupancy tax to be allocated for Visit Granbury Incorporated for marketing and stimulating hotel tourism for the city of Granbury. Get my computer up here real quick. This item here was an item that the staff had limited, the number of council, had, and that the council members had met with the executive board, limited a group of them with the Visit Granbury Incorporated, and was suggested during one of the meetings to conduct a joint meeting with the city council and Visit Granbury to discuss the proposed reallocation of the hotel occupancy tax to the Lake Conference Center budget. Councilmember Couch already requested for this item to be discussed during an executive session under economic development exemption, which after further investigation, that really doesn't fall into that category. And subsequently, Mayor Pro Tim, Tony Mobley, has requested it be discussed in the open session. So at that, with that said, we will probably, we will go ahead and continue to discuss this in our open session here, but I will like to start out with having Councilman Couch kind of lead us into this and some findings and why we have this on the council agenda tonight. If you would, please, Councilman Couch.
Well, when we last met, what I suggested is that the Visit Granbury organization expand their role when it comes to not just marketing, but also sales. And if you'd like, I'd like Jim Leach to get up and, and talk about that proposal, and then there'll be some subsequent people that step up as well.
Good evening. My name's Jim Leach. My wife and I, as you probably know, own the NLA Granbury 205 West Doyle Street. I've been a board member of Visit Granbury since the first day we opened for three years, and I'm really proud of what we've accomplished, but I think that, you know, over time, over the past three years, as we put our marketing plans and programs in place, that it became clear to the board and to others in the community that over time, we needed to add another element of our mission, which was to build out some sort of sales component into what we do as an organization. And one of the things that we talked about over time, and not probably as early on as we would have liked perhaps, because I know that there's a lot of folks who sit on, you know, in the community, and some of you on the city council would have, would prefer that we have done some of this discussion earlier in the process, but the fact of the matter is, is that when we put our programs and our marketing in place, we view this as a destination marketing organization, a way to take our city and market it in new and better ways to generate more hot tax and more visitation to the city. And I think over that three-year period, we've done pretty well with accomplishing that goal. We've increased hot tax, year one, year two, and now year three, we're struggling a little bit more than we had in the past. And I think that there's some factors that have been in our control and some factors that have been outside of our control. I can tell you from, speaking from my property, I'll give you a little insight on, on my property's performance this year. Year over year, over the last four or five years, I've grown my business by a healthy percentage, every year. This year, in the first half of the year, I haven't. And so when you look at hot tax being down this year, roughly running at about 4% down, you know, I'm partly in that number, okay? I'm in that number. So part of what I do as an in is I market myself and I market Granbury, but I don't depend on Visit Granbury for my marketing. So as I work towards building my business and growing my business, I look to opportunities that I can do to build more hot tax. And this year, we haven't been as successful as we had in the past. So when you look at that 4% number being down this year, which everybody's concerned about, and rightfully so, we, we are part of that number. My in is part of that number because I'm not getting into all the numbers on bed tax every year that we contribute to the city, but we contribute a good percentage of bed tax to the city every year that I know all of y'all see. And over the course of the last 13 years, we've probably contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars in bed tax to the city by virtue of some of the successes we've had. But this year has been a little off the mark for us, and so I just want you to know that insight from me as a factor in why things are down a little bit in what we're seeing. I can't speak for the other lodging properties and some of the polling that I know. I think some of them are down, some of the ones who have done better in the past, that we would view as flagships in this, in the city, probably aren't doing as well either. And some of that's in our control at Visit Granbury and how we market and what we do to, to bring people to Granbury, and some of it is just things that are happening in the market that, you know, are happening in the market, all right? There's a lot more supply in Granbury for lodging than there ever has been before. So the factor of Airbnb and the short-term rentals is affecting the B and B and hotel lodging market more than anyone thinks. And it's hard to get our handle around that, but I think we should try to get our arms around that so we understand those numbers that are affecting what's happening with the hotels and the B and Bs. So I'm here to say, and not talk too long, I try not to, is say to you that, you know, whatever we discuss tonight about how Visit Granbury is doing with its marketing, I can assure you that the Board of Directors of Visit Granbury takes this job very seriously in terms of how we market, how we rate our performance, how well we think we're doing, and how we judge our CEO. And I think that everybody should know that I speak, I think, for all the board members, that we are working really hard to make sure that what we do going forward meets the needs of the community and increases visitation, increases hotel nights, increases meeting facility rentals at the conference center, and does everything we can possibly do to be successful going forward. So it's not missed by anybody on the board, this is not new to us, what we're faced with, and I just hope that we can work all together to put a program and a plan and a proposal in place that benefits all the lodging properties and also our meeting facilities and our conference center. Because we know that we have to do that together to be successful. You know, this idea of it's somebody's fault, it's one person's or one, one organization's fault is just, you know, not the way to approach this. So I ask that everybody just work together to try to make it better, and that's what I'll say for now. So thank you very much. I appreciate all of you. I appreciate all of your feedback, all of your thoughts, all of your concerns, and I'm going to do everything I can personally and as part of the board to make it better for us going forward. But I just wanted to give you that little extra insight about my in and how that's probably impacting a little bit of what we're seeing.
Thank you, Jim. Councilman Couch, I want to pause here just a little bit. I was not aware of any presentations in this, so I want to make sure that we don't lead us into a lot of presentations because this is a discussion between the council and what we want to do as far as a budget item here, so.
Okay.
And then in the future, if there's going to be a presentation, we need to get those with the city secretary in advance so that I know about these.
Okay. Well, I did, I did talk to Chris about this. There's a, there's a specific email that there would be a presentation by VGI, and Chris told me that that would fall under this agenda item.
And let me correct something here. I think we're mixing words here. He wanted an agenda item, and I told him he could discuss it on this agenda. Now then, he told me on Monday he was going to get me a presentation in time for people to scan it before we plug it into that, and I hadn't seen that.
That's too late.
Well, yeah, there is no, it's a verbal presentation.
It's too late, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on, so at this time.
Teresa would like to come up and speak now.
Who?
Teresa. And she's going to present the proposal, and I'll sum it up. You know, Chris and I've had quite a few discussions regarding VGI's role when it comes to the conference center. And, you know, we met, Chris came and met with a few of the members, then, then those members discussed it and tried to come up with the best thing for not just VGI, but for the conference center. And we concluded that we are the, we are the best fit to exclusively book the conference center's meeting space. And we can do that with not only the current funding, but we're going to also be able to cut $100,000 out of the deficit at the conference center. So with that, I'll turn it over to Teresa.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, mayor, Mr. Kaufman. I just wanted to share with you that a lot of conversation and discussion came to the result that Visit Granbury would like to move forward with a plan to hire an experienced group salesperson, someone with a proven track record of sales success to sell the Granbury's conference center, and in addition to that, all the other venues, event and meeting venues that we have in Granbury. So the conference center has about 15,000 square feet. We have other venues in Granbury that have meeting and event space. We have, some of our limited service properties on 377 have a meeting room. They're not currently being served in a sales capacity unless they're able to do that for themselves. We expect to consolidate the RFPs. We get some RFPs for meetings and events through our current website, and when we get those RFPs, we forward them to any appropriate properties. We want, our plan is to bolster that extensively and be proactive in a sales effort, someone who's going to go knock on doors, attend the specific trade shows, and generate meeting and conference and event space for Granbury. Just recently, the Board of Directors approved an event grant program, and so we would like for this person to be actively involved in enticing multi-day established events to come to Granbury, not unlike the Lone Star Street Rod, which was already a multi-day. It was established, it came to Granbury, we just finished our fourth year. For them being here, and we've made the commitment, and they've accepted, and they're excited to come back again for next year. Those are the kinds of things we'll look for and we'll look at and we'll actively pursue. One of the main requirements of this particular proposal would be to have a really well-thought-out and crafted memorandum of understanding, so there'd be a clear understanding of the role of Visit Granbury within the Lake Granbury Conference Center and the role that we would play there. Also, we would need a detailed MOU with any event or meeting venue that we have in Granbury so we could have good analysis that, well, first, we need to know their availability, we need to know about their tracking and their economic impact of that, so we can put some measurement to this new position that we're proposing. To pay for this new position, we're proposing that we utilize our cash reserve funds, because there's been some discussion and concern about, well, from two council members who were concerned about the amount that we have in our cash reserve funds. Typically, a DMO will have two to three months. I was at a conference last week, and some were saying, "Well, we have 18 months, and we have 24 months." So it varies from organization to organization how much cash reserve you want to have. It could be based on seasonality. It could be based on the fact that you need to be careful if there could be some sort of catastrophic event, and if you've got something like that happening in your community, that's not the time to scale back on your marketing, that's the time to ratchet it up. We are again requesting, like I did at budget workshop, that we continue the partnership we have with the city council at 90-10 partnership. 90% of the hotel tax goes to Visit Granbury for the work that we do, the money that we invest in marketing efforts, and then 10% goes to your general fund, and then that general fund allocation of $50,000. So this would be year three of that particular partnership that we currently enjoy and that we currently really appreciate. I don't want you to forget that tourism is economic development. The work that we do directly affects our businesses, the small businesses and the tourism-based businesses in Granbury. We take it very seriously. We do our best. Can we do better? Most likely. That's why we're always looking at the analytics and the impact that we have and the return on investment. But tourism is economic development, and I know it's important to Granbury. We have enough people coming to the visitor center, the current location and the former location that we enjoyed here, and they say, "Oh, my gosh, we just love it here. We might want to move here now." So resident relocation is part of the tourism work that we do. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and get back on the agenda here with the PowerPoint. We have a, the attachments we have. We have a, the attachments we have, our PowerPoint presentation by Tony Mobley and agreement between VGI and the city of Granbury and a VGI annual budget report. So if I could get the PowerPoint presentation by Tony Mobley next.
So I'm up?
You're up.
So I wanted this PowerPoint presentation primarily because I tried to go through the math just verbally a couple of times earlier and was having a real hard time communicating. So I thought I'd just put it on, simple, just simple math and just show you where we're coming from. In January, we had a $384,000 cash balance within two accounts on the balance sheet. Since then, we spent $193.8 on a build-out and move-in at the comfort, at the new site, which should leave about $191. We've done a lot of work over there, we've had a lot of extra expenses in that process, primarily because we had, for one, we had to pay rent here and rent there while we were doing the build-out. So again, we won't have to do that going forward. We won't have to spend $193 on a build-out going forward. My concern was, well, I guess what stuck out to me, and I've mentioned it in almost every presentation that Teresa has given in front of the council, is that when we see a, when we see a cash balance growing like this, my question is, what is the plan for it? Now that we had the plan to build out and that's been done, we don't need to look at that going forward. But what I would like to point out is that over the number of months since the inception of this group, it's just under $10,000 a month. It was not being used in order to accumulate that. Now that those things are done, we don't need to do that again. Therefore, building up this big surplus, and I appreciate the fact that most private businesses, yes, they do keep anywhere from three, three to six months' worth of working capital in a checking account. But unlike most businesses, and Jim, you'll have to agree, you don't know next month whether somebody's gonna be walking through the door or not. As, as a DMO, as Visit Granbury, you know that these checks are still coming. So you can operate a little bit different. And I would, I would point out that every department in this city operates with, I don't know, zero cash balance in their checking account because they have to spend what is budgeted, and we don't move from that. If they do, they come to the council and we have to approve it. When I was at a, at one of your board meetings earlier this year, your chairman actually made the statement that the gem of this community is the conference center, and it is not being handled correctly. I'm just trying to throw some resources to that to allow our new manager over there all of the, all the resources that we can possibly give him to be successful to turn that around. Because since that building has been built, we've heard the same thing. It's just not utilized. Fridays and Saturdays, no problem. The rest of the week, it's shuttered. And I would like to change that. Everybody in this city would like to change that. If, I'd like to point out also that if we fast-forward from January until now and we stayed on that same savings pattern, we'd have about $450,000 in the, in the checking account. And that would, that would be without the build-out. I'd like to close with just reading a statement. And, and I think the focus of the presentations, I think, are a little bit misguided because you've talked about production and, and numbers that are down and those type of things. This has nothing to do with that. You said, hey, we've been working really hard. And I would ask our city manager, Chris, do you work really hard? Mitch, does, does everybody in your department work really hard? Brad, your firemen, these guys work for free, but do they work hard? I think everybody works hard to be successful in every organization. I know, I work hard, I know my, my staff works hard. So that's a given, and if we're not doing that, we need to be doing something else. But as a council, I would like to have said, this is not a punishment. This is, we are charged with managing the entire city budget. That means every department. When we're challenged with putting a tax increase on our agenda here or placing it before the voters on a ballot versus taking excess funds from one department to address a greater need in the city, I don't think there's anybody up at this diocese that would, would look at, or should look at it any different. I will always, almost always vote to take care of that greater need. Right now, that greater need is a conference center and a fire department, which is what your own board chairman said at a recent, at a recent meeting. This move will allow us to take restricted funds, hot revenue, move it over to the conference center, take general funds that are being used over there now, it's a legal use of those funds that we learned in a, in a WebEx earlier this year, and then take general funds from there to help another department. And that's all we're asking to do. This is not a punishment. And again, I'll state what I stated last minute. We've got guys out there fighting fires in 105-degree temperature with full gear on, standing next to fires. And we're asking those guys to cut their budget, and I don't know how we can look at it any different than the way this is proposed. You have, what we're asking you to cut is in your, still in your checking account today. So you can operate exactly the same way that you did this last year with the exception of the build-out, spend down your surplus, and then we address it next year. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council have any discussion on both presentations? Councilman Couch.
So as a council member, if I'm being asked to move $120,000 from a marketing entity of our entire city over to the conference center, I want to know what those funds would be used for.
I think we discussed most of them at the budget where we thought, where we realized the needs that we needed. And I think both people have talked about the webinar. When we realized, when the council realized that, that the hot funds could be used for many, many other things, we realized that the conference center was one of them, that all the council looked at and said, well, we've got some, we've got some upgrades that we need to do. We've got some things that we need to do to make that conference center better. And we discussed some of them, and I think the $120,000 range come about with all the things that needs to be done to that conference center. That's not, that's not gonna completely take care of the conference center, but it's some things that needs to be done. And they realized that that $120,000 would take care of that, and oh, by the way, we could use some, some hot money to do that. And the hot money went from this point to this point, and the council said, you know, well, why would we not use some of that money for our own use? For, I say our own use, for what it is meant to be used for. There's a lot, a lot more things, not just the conference center. There's other things that could be used for as we, as the council said on that webinar, people out in the audience said in that webinar, and it really brought to light some things that a lot of folks didn't realize that that money could be used for. We just went out and as a council said, yeah, we'll turn over the whole hot, or 90% of it and, and let VGI use that money to operate. But in the next year-end or the two years in, we realized that there were some needs that the city still had hold of that need, that could be funded with that. And so that was the reason, I believe, the council, and I don't know where it got, how it got, so, where, and I gotta agree with Jim. It's not about the council playing against the VGI, it's about us being a team because VGI needs that conference center in top-notch shape just as well as we need that conference center to support it. Everybody needs that conference center, and we have the, we want to take that money and, and put it into it.
I appreciate that. I mean, you're, you're absolutely right. And I'm willing to consider drawing down some of those reserve funds. But you gotta remember, reserve funds are for the unexpected, things that come upon a city. We could have another tornado that wipes out a lot of the hotels or something. So it would be very critical to have funds available to not let the tourism business totally end up at zero. So I'm, I'm very reluctant to, to bring down those funds too much. But again, when, when we approve funds, we know what the funds are gonna be used for. Now, in this, I don't know if it's loaded here, but there was a list of things. It was very, it was specific. Can we pull that up?
I've got it right here.
And put it on the...
I can't do that. Contact uses, the construction, maintenance, operation of a convention or visitor center. Facilities and personnel for the registration of convention delegates. Advertising and promotion programs to attract tourists. Encouragement and promotion of the arts. Historical restoration and preservation projects. So there's a, and, and that's half the list. But this certainly fits within that. And, and if I can, let me apologize for using the term budget cut. This is not a budget cut. It's a revenue cut, but you're, it's, it's a revenue cut, but it's not a budget cut. Your budget can remain exactly the same. You can live the same way you expect. It's just, it'll draw down your, your reserves as opposed to replenishing those reserves. And that's all it is. And in the case of a catastrophic event, I think we have the ability to act on the fly on some of those issues as well, do we not, Mr. City Manager?
That's historically what happens.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to address that issue with our councilman and couch, I think that when we had the last catastrophic event here, our town proved that we can take care of our own. And not only that, but there's grant money that can be applied for in those events that I'm aware. I mean, we, we came together as a town, and Jim, thank you so much for bringing that up. I want everybody to understand that this is definitely not intended to be confrontational. The reason that we're doing this out here instead of back there is because we are working with public money, and we want, all of us up here and all of the board members, I am one of them, definitely want to work together to ensure that we are doing the right thing for the people that put the money in those coffers, which are the taxpayers. So that's what we're trying to accomplish here. And if we, if we have a catastrophic, catastrophic event, I think that that would be cared for in a different manner. I don't think that that's really relevant today for this particular issue.
And I think, I think our city manager has some more input. Like I talked about, there was some, there was a workshop, there was a budget workshop, and we discussed these items. And, you know, that was the, that was just the rounded-off number that we come up with that there need, that, like I said, there's many, many more things that we need for that conference center. I mean, when you talk about repainting, re-stroking, you know, and, you know, we even talked about adding to this and make it more attractive, more, you know, we've got hookups back there for vendors to go out there on that balcony, and we don't, we don't have that right now. So at what point do we use it, do it? And what funds do we use? Because the hot funds is a fund that you can use for that. So that's what I would want to use it for. Mr. Allen?
Thank you. You know, I heard about this at their budget workshop, and I know the paper probably put me wrong, what I can say. But someone I heard brought that up was Councilman Mobley. It was someone I heard bringing it up to get it done. And I thank you for Councilman Mobley for all the work, the hard work you've done on this. There's about eight other departments need the same thing done. If you take over that job too, that would be great. But I'm just hoping that you're not doing this for Kyle because of what happened when you and him in February. That would really bother me as a councilman. And y'all can sit there and laugh, folks, but after the deal, I'll tell you, that's not right. And I, you know, here's, here's a deal, I've been on here nine years. We've lost an average of $328,000 a year in the conference center. We tried exactly what y'all are saying. Go hire a salesman. Go hire a salesman. We bought a brand-new van probably five years ago. Mayor, you was on council then, and I bet it ain't got 40,000 miles on it.
And you put them on it.
And I put most of them on, gonna be all right. That's right. And, I mean, I'm not saying that they could do the best job, by no means. If you're not happy with them, get rid of them in the budget. But they've got the tools and stuff set up. We heard Kyle sit here, and he wasn't sure how he's gonna market, he wasn't sure what he's gonna do. How's he gonna hire a salesperson? Is that concerning?
All right, Mr. Allen.
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
Here comes the truth.
The truth?
The truth.
Tell me where I lied at.
You didn't lie. I'm gonna tell you the truth of where we're at as a conference center. And I'm trying to be positive here. In December, we, we received a report from our consultant that what we need to do at the conference center. We hired Mr. Donnie Anderson to do that analysis for us.
He's here today.
And he's here. And Kyle had been on duty a month when he stands up before you to try to answer all your questions. So he didn't know exactly everything that you wanted to hear, but the bottom line is, we adopted a strategic plan in December. That's the truth.
To, to take the money out of the funds?
A strategic plan to market the conference center.
Was that plan included, taking the money out?
The budget was not considered in that strategic plan. Okay. The next step is, was to hire a marketing person and to reassign the current marketing person that was not able to physically do that job. She ended up leaving our organization because she didn't want to work there anymore. Okay? The truth is, is we've been acquiring resumes from people to fill that position. Two weeks ago, no, it was last Wednesday, we were ready to extend an offer to someone, and Councilmember Couch calls me and says, don't do that, we need to talk about this at the council because we may want to hire that person at Visit Granbury. That's the truth of the matter. Okay, fast-forward, rewind, a month ago, I'm talking to Ms. Crowe on the phone about this very issue about we need to market our conference center because our strategic plan says that. And what's wrong with using hotel tax money to do that? It's a legitimate expense to do that. What's wrong with that? One way or another, it needs to happen, either through Visit Granbury or through the conference center or both. I don't care, but it needs to be done.
But two things, the question Mr. Mobley asked Teresa was what have you brought to the conference center? And she said it wasn't her job at that time, it's a budget meeting. It's what was said.
No, I think what was said, what was said was, what events have you brought to this town?
What have you brought to town?
That's what was said.
Okay. Now, let's rewind back. You've been with us three years. Whenever you hired Ms. Brown...
I didn't hire McLeo.
You didn't?
No.
Did she work on you?
She was hired before I got here.
Did she work on you?
Ultimately, yes.
Okay. We had the same problem there then that we got today. We didn't have sales force. And we, we hired them.
We hired one.
We hired them. They wasn't there. It didn't work.
We hired one, yeah.
It didn't work. And if we're wasting, I can't run my business losing...
I would also like to ask you what other eight departments need to be trimmed.
Go ahead and talk.
I just did. Answer me, please.
What'd you ask?
What other eight departments do we need to go through this process for?
Airport would be a good one.
We've already done that.
Oh, really?
There's not any subsidy going to the airport this year from the general fund. First time in history.
Yeah, that's right.
We've taken care of that.
How much do we transfer out of that into the conference center?
Last year or this year?
Last year.
About $300,000. And that's what we're trying to eliminate.
Yeah.
Isn't that what you want to do? Eliminate the transfer?
Absolutely. That's taxpayer money here.
That's what I'm working on.
This is not one of ours up here, your money, it's taxpayer money.
That's exactly what we're working on.
Yeah.
We're trying to accomplish that.
Mayor, can I clarify something?
So council, let's, let's make sure that we stay on the topic of discussing and considering the amount of hotel occupancy tax to be allocated to Visit Granbury and corporate for marketing and stimulating the tourism in the city of Granbury. Mr. Couch?
Okay. The, the next agenda item segues into this as well. And so what I think, if, if we're gonna use additional funds that come from VGI, I think it should be for one person, for one purpose, and that is to book rental space there. And I'm open to that. I think Chris is right that not only should the VGI do that, but also the conference center. So I would hate to see this, these funds go to paint when the problem is not paint, the problem is we're not filling up the conference center. So I'm entirely open to concentrating on these funds and moving these funds that are gonna see the biggest yield on the money. And I think that's probably enough for this agenda item because I think we get into that better in the next agenda item.
And, and you know, council, you, you just approved a consent agenda that could have been a hot tax. The, the $353,000 for the, for the audio and stuff like that that's going into the conference center, that could have been all hot tax money. By rights, it could have been. So we're moving money around. We're trying to do this. We're asking for $120,000 we leave from there so we can do the things we need... We're asking for $120,000 we leave from there so we can do the things we need to the conference center. That's all we're asking.
Do y'all have a plan showing what the return's gonna be?
Well, yeah. I mean...
I'd like to see it.
No, I'm just saying that I would want to see every penny of that go to the lease-up of the conference center. And I'm open to moving funds around if we can, if we can have a real plan on how those funds would be spent. And right now, it's move $120,000 over here and just trust us it's gonna get spent correctly.
I guess that's what I'm saying. If I, if the council would've said, "Okay, we need $350,000 from the hot fund to do the audiovisual," and they've already got the contract, and you said, "Okay, let's move it to there," right? No. We'd be right here doing the same thing, discussing what damage we're doing to VGI because we're taking some money to improve our conference center.
At least we know where the money's going.
And we will know where the money's going. Council?
I would like to just say that these are tax dollars. We all recognize that. This council is given the responsibility to be the steward over those tax dollars, whether it's property tax, sales tax, hotel occupancy tax, any other kind of tax we collect. This is what y'all are supposed to appropriate. I give you recommendations. I put together a budget. My budget includes a salesperson being hired at the conference center, very much the same budget that we had last year, and following the strategic plan that has been adopted. Okay. The question came, or the idea came, was I think we should move $120,000 from Visit Granbury's budget and allocate it to the conference center budget. And so that's why we're here. Now then, you want to know how you could spend that? We gave you a list, two meetings in a row, that identified how that money could be spent to increase tourism at that facility. What else is on the table? What I heard Councilmember Mobley say is we could take that 120, operate our budget that we're doing now, take that 120 out and fly it to our general fund to be allocated to other use. So that's, that's the other side of the onion, so to speak, the inner layer of the onion. So you could carry out your budget the way I've got it prepared, subsidize with hotel tax money, and remove $120,000 of the general fund, and allocate it, and I would use it toward buying two new fire trucks that we desperately need that we talked about at the budget workshop. That's on the next agenda item. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, what y'all need to decide tonight. What you want to do and how you want, if you don't want me to buy fire trucks, great. All right, tell me that. If you want me, if you don't want me to, tell me that. If you, if you do, I'm gonna figure out a way to do it, and we've gotta work through this next agenda item to determine that.
And we want Chris and the staff to bounce, and that's what we're here for. The staff is wondering which direction to go because just this amount of money affects not just the tourism budget, but it affects all the budgets. So the council needs to say, to go forward on what we're gonna do with this so that the staff can go on and do their job.
Mayor?
Councilman Couch?
Okay. I need to clarify something that Chris said. He said, "I told him to stop that hire." That is not true.
Stop what?
To stop...
I volunteered to do that. Based on your phone call about that.
All right. I just want to make that clear. I didn't tell you to do that.
Well, it's okay for you to tell me to do something.
Well, I don't know. I like, you said, the conversation we had, it says, because we said, "We think it needs to be one person selling the conference center, not two." Okay? And you said, "Well, that's the way it should be." But again, the problem year after year after year is we're not leasing up the space at the conference center. And in all of this discussion from it started, from when we started, the word "sales" I don't think has even come up in the conversation. This $120,000 should be about selling, and how can we improve that, that priority? Because if we sell the conference center, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars sitting over there in vacancy. I'm in that business. I understand vacancy. And it could be turned into cash if we had aggressive salespeople out there selling it. So can we, can we talk about what options might exist if we focus on the $120,000 on, on selling the conference center in the best way possible? I mean, it's one of the nicest conference centers in the state of Texas for, for 300 people capacity, and if we do that, we will have money left over for fire trucks. So that's what I'd like to talk about if the council's willing to discuss that.
Councilman Corbin?
I think, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but it sounds like we're getting a little confused or intermingling things a little bit. There is a prepared budget by Chris that has a salesperson in it for the conference center as it sits today, that we've already talked about. So this 120,000, or whatever that magic number may be, I don't think anyone is saying it has to be 120,000, but let's stick with that for now since we've been talking about that. The difference between the numbers that were shown here by Councilman Mobley's presentation is that over the last 39 months, they've been able to put, VGI's been able to put back $9,846 every month into their cash reserve. The difference between that amount and the 10,000 is only $154 a month. So essentially, you are talking about the difference between a position that is already being hired through the conference center, taking cash from VGI that may potentially be used to hire the exact same position, or taking that cash and putting it into the conference center to fix issues that we have all agreed need to be fixed. So it's not necessarily that we're draining VGI's cash fund. $154 a month would take a significant amount of time to delegate what's in their cash fund today. We're talking about taking that amount of money and either keeping it in VGI's cash fund, VGI using it to hire the exact same person we've already accommodated for in the budget for the conference center, or using that fund to go towards the conference center and fix issues that we have all agreed are there. If I'm correct in that, I think the potential arguing can come to a close there. You have, we have three options essentially. Leave it where it's at, and either do an amendment to allow VGI to hire a salesperson, which is the exact same position that we're already hiring at the conference center, or they can continue business as normal and put that amount of money into their cash fund. Or the third option, take that amount of money, or some amount of money, out of the VGI budget and put it towards issues in the conference center.
What do you do with the money if they already hired a salesman off our budget?
For the conference center?
With $130,000.
Well, that, I mean, ultimately speaking, that would be up to the conference center. We've already gotten a list that we got...
You don't care where it goes, just long as it goes to them?
It will go to fixing the conference center. I don't disagree with you that whatever that money is spent on, we need, we need to know about it.
You don't have no idea.
Well, I'm not saying that we have to know at this very moment, but I would want to know where it's gonna be spent before it's spent, especially if we're taking funds from one department to another.
We, tonight, we don't have a say on that.
I don't know if that's necessarily true.
Mayor?
Councilman Couch?
Okay. When I look at the proposed budget, I believe it's underfunded for the conference center when it comes to promoting and selling the conference center. There's only $10,000 in the budget for trade shows. There's only $32,000 in there for advertising promotion, and there's, there's four thou, only $4,000 in there for travel and training. I mean, $4,000 is not gonna get you very far if you're, if you're doing much traveling. So I think that is underfunded. So I'm, I'm gonna propose something. And that is that we, of the $120,000, that we move 40,000 to the conference center so that they can beef up their, their sales team. There's nothing in the budget for printing, you know, for pamphlets, for schematics of this conference center. There's nothing in the budget for that. So if we move $40,000 over there, because your salesperson is gonna need funds to do their job. The $80,000 left is left in VGI, and we also hire a person, but that person doesn't just help the conference center, it's also, they're also used to sell the other event space in Granbury. I think that's a more complete approach. It's all about sales. It's all about fixing the problem, which is vacancy at the conference center.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Percy Ryder?
If that is a proposal, why the split the way that it is? Why don't we just do a 50-50? And I'm not even proposing that we do that because I think that I agree with moving 120 over. And I want everybody to remember, it's not that we're taking it from VGI and putting it into the conference center. We are taking hot fund dollars and allocating it to places that need it. It's not VGI's money. And I'm on the board, so, and so are you. It's not our money. It's hot tax money to be used for various purposes. And right now, I think that the greatest need is the conference center, and I agree with you on the salesperson. The conference center needs a salesperson. I don't agree that the VGI should have a salesperson that is responsible for the conference center. Coming from a marketing standpoint, and this I know because this is my world, they're two different animals. And to hold Kyle responsible for something that VGI is selling is not prudent. I think that that is not an accurate approach to the marketing. If you're going to have a marketer, that marketer needs to be under Kyle, and Kyle needs to know what's going on at all times with that marketing strategy. And if you're going to hire a marketer for VGI, VGI needs to go know exactly what that marketer is doing. And I don't think that they need to cross over. Now, do they maybe help each other? Absolutely. I co-market all the time with people in my field. That's how it works, and that's how you build relationships, and that's how you bring people in. VGI is actually responsible in our contract for bringing events to Granbury. That is, that's written in our contract, is that we should be doing that. That's part of our process. We haven't been doing that. We've been helping with some events around town, but we haven't done anything to host an event individually as VGI. So if you're going to bring a salesperson to VGI, I personally, personally believe that that person should be doing what the conference center salesperson is doing, and they both need to be bringing events to Granbury. Just a thought, just throwing it out there.
Can I ask?
I think we're on the same, almost on the same page.
Almost.
Yeah. Can I ask you a few other questions? What do we budget? I don't have the budget in front of me for the sales force there. Is it 130,000 or...?
The salary range that's advertised is a salary between 38,000 and 54,000, and then there's benefits at about 22% of that, or 30%, you could say. And then we have some marketing funds at 32,000 and 10,000, and that's kind of the package.
Will y'all give them an incentive if they buck a certain...
No.
...for anything?
No.
That would work. I think you...
It's a government, you can't do that.
I think both you, Mr. Ryder and Gary is on the right track. How about if we split and went 50, Gary?
Well...
Wouldn't it work or not?
Could I add something before?
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to say that, you know, Teresa Anderson and Michael Ross and Kyle Smith met together and talked about this very thing back in May, about doing something like this, where they would have a salesperson, and we would have our salesperson. They would work together to market our facility, and they would also market whatever else needed to be marketed as well. I'm sorry, the word "sales" may be a more appropriate word because to me, marketing is a verb, and to some other folks, it's a noun. So I'm gonna say "sales." We're gonna hire a salesperson, and they're gonna hire a salesperson, and they're gonna work together. That was the dream back in May. Now, since May, it's all changed, but I would love to see that happen, and I would love to see some, some partnership working here to where they would know what's going on together. And I would also like to say that there's other people standing in line fixing, start asking for these hot funds. Other nonprofits in town have already approached me. I'm gonna have to work up some kind of an application or something because I just can't keep saying no to everybody. They need to have an application so they can come before you at some point in time to talk about this in the future. But the idea of all our funds being used in one direction, I think those days are over based on education.
Well, it sounds to me like we need to, we need to find the right percentage allocated, but I, I still am a little reluctant with not understanding what, what the funds would be used for.
I think anybody could spend the $120,000 on that conference center. I mean, don't, you're into construction, things like that. I mean, if you did, if you didn't do it just on sales, there's so many things to be done to the conference center, $120,000 will not touch it. And we're at least gonna be going forward. There's, that money there is gonna be used to attract people there to the conference center. You go to sell a house, you start working on it, you put new doors on it, you do this and that, you do the, you know, you just make it nice looking appearance-wise. Well, our conference center is nice. When people come to it, they enjoy the view out the back windows, they enjoy that conference center, but there's things that need to be done to it, and that's what we can use that money for. I think if any amount that we said, we could spend it all.
Well, I don't disagree with that.
We could spend it, and it, and you would have an itemized list of where it went within probably a week.
The list that we provided at the budget workshop were for activities which would attract...
Right.
Multi-night events to tourism, for our tourism industry. That was what was presented at the budget. What we're talking about now is spending on capital improvements of the facilities. I can do whatever you want me to do, but what we were talking about was, was filling up that facility.
Well, I would just use it as a filler. I mean, if you don't use it all for that, there's plenty of places, I mean, there's plenty of places you can use that money. So $150,000 would get, or 120 would get used, I promise you.
I'm gonna stick with mine.
Councilman Allen?
Mayor, I wanna, I think I understand Mr. Ryder right, and Mr. Couch had offered 40, and you said 60, I believe.
No, I said a 50-50 split.
50-50 split.
Yeah, if we end up doing this.
Yeah.
There's no reason to do 80 in one place and 40 in another.
Okay. I'll make a motion to transfer $50,000 out of the DMO fund.
60.
50. 500. Over, out of this coming year's budget, to the conference center.
Can, can you restate that?
Give them $50,000 out of...
60.
500.
50, 50, 60.
500. 500.
So 50,000 to the conference center and 70 to VGI, not a 50-50 split?
Yeah. You said 40.
That's in the middle seat.
She said...
I, I'm open to, I'm open to the 50-50.
We got, wait, hang on. We got a motion on the floor now. It's in the form of a motion to, to take $50,000 and put in a fund to, from the VGI.
From their proposed budget.
Proposed budget. Is that right, Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
I have a question.
That's a second. Now, we have a second? Mr. Couch? Now discussion.
Yeah, I would like to ask for an amendment to that motion, that these funds would be used exclusively for the sales effort at both Visit Granbury and the conference center. That's what I'd ask for the amendment to be.
That's right. When you say "sales," that be printing and literature?
Yes.
Yeah. I have a problem.
So, Mr. Allen, you want to...
I'm in that motion. I'm in that motion.
... and your, your motion would be to move fifty thousand dollars from the Visit Granbury for sales to the, in the budget, right?
Yes.
And Mr. Couch, you got a second on that still?
Yes.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the motion, counsel? If no further discussion, Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilperson Ryder, how do you vote?
Nay.
That is a three-two, it fails.
I might, I might say this, Mayor, on the record, that as of, you know, we won't be voting on the Visit Granbury budget until September, and so, um, I don't know how to with that, how to rules of procedure, or gonna deal with all this, uh, questionable motions and, no, no, not for votes or whatever, so. Anyway, I just wanna make that known, that, you know, we're not voting on their budget tonight. They were voting on, looking at their proposed budget and removing fifty thousand dollars from it, and reducing it by fifty thousand.
Right.
And that didn't pass.
It didn't pass.
I just wanted to articulate that for the video.
Okay.
Uh, see, Mayor, you were turning that way, but did you say that, what'd you say about the budget in September?
That's when we will vote on, on the, the budget and the VGI budget.
So, you're saying you're gonna put it back on, or what?
Well, we, we have to vote on, vote on the budget as a whole at some point. What we were trying to do was kinda shape it to where it's ready to, um, you know, put it on our budget for the city website.
Oh, okay.
And then there's public, uh, inspection for the next thirty days after that, and then first meeting in September, you as a council will have a public hearing for that budget, and based on that, you can change what's proposed and vote on it, or you can table it and move on, and it'll be accepted. So, it's up to y'all what you wanna do. But their budget is specifically required to be voted on by the council.
Yeah. Okay, can I take, take a run at this again? Um, then I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, the budget for VGI remains at a ninety-ten split, that there is a, a direct transfer from VGI to the conference center for the sole purpose of sales in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Mr. Couch, the, the motion has already died. We move on to the next agenda item.
We're done?
Yes. It already died.
At least you know how, my field.
Item number six is discuss the proposed fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen annual budget for the city of Granbury and receive input from the city council. Chris, do you have a staff report on that?
I will be glad to talk on this. It was suggested that, um, the city council called special election to put, um, an option for the voters to vote to approve two cents to go towards, uh, fire operation expenditures on the next ballot through a special election. Uh, done some research and have determined that the council doesn't have that authority unilaterally to declare, uh, a special election on anything except what the city charter provides for. That, that means for the election of council members and for charter review. So, um, that puts us in a spot where we're talking about, um, needing to raise almost three hundred thousand dollars for two pieces of firefighting equipment. That's a, that's an annual payment that you're looking at there of, of two hundred eighty-seven, seven hundred for the two pieces. This is a budget, so it could vary a little bit, over a ten-year period, for debt service to, to buy a new ladder truck and a new pumper truck. Um, that, these units would be fully equipped with all the equipment that, that goes into making that truck ready to respond to a scene. All we'd be lacking is our volunteers. And so, uh, that's kinda what we're looking at, and my, my thought process was, is to talk about it tonight again, because, um, you know, in our budget workshop, we talked about it and had this idea that, um, you know, maybe we should let the voters decide. Well, the way the law is written is, uh, you as a council make that decision. If the citizens like what you're doing, they will just get right in line and pay their taxes. If they don't like what you're doing, they can have the, uh, a referendum to recall that vote and have a, a special election for that, which is pretty messy. Um, but, but in order to do that, it has to exceed the rollback rate. Well, two cents is not gonna exceed the rollback rate. So, uh, it's up to you to decide if you want to increase taxes, uh, to, to be able to service that debt. I will tell you that, uh, I talked with one of the council members today and got to do them some math, and, you know, this would come out of the general fund. And just to give y'all an example of, of the general fund, it's about a sixteen million dollar amount that funds the general fund, and approximately nine, nine million of that is for salaries. And so, the rest of it is for, um, um, the activity that we, that we have to carry out, buying, you know, equipment and what have you. But, um, so in order to, to find, let's just say, three hundred thousand dollars out of the six million dollar, um, operating expense, uh, is about a five percent cut across the board on everything. So, um, to, that just shows you, I just want you to see that, that's the, that's how tight it is, is if we cut five percent across all the operating expenses for the general fund, we could raise that three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but five percent is hard to cut, and, um, we could, we could overestimate revenue and make it a little easier. Uh, we don't know exactly what sales tax revenue is gonna do every year, and that's why we were able to, uh, buy that audio/video equipment tonight with the surplus. We've had an outstanding year of sales tax. Will that continue? We don't know. Uh, sales tax makes up about seven million dollars of our revenue, while the, the property tax for maintenance and operation is about two-point-eight million dollars. And so, you can see that we're heavily reliant on sales tax, and it's important that we don't overestimate how much our revenue's gonna be. Uh, but I would like to say that, uh, another council member, Councilmember Allen, had a great idea that wanted to talk about the five-year outlook for the fire department. And so, uh, we have a plan that was submitted last year, and last year, they were requesting a pumper truck and a ladder truck, and that's why it's percolated up again this year. And then, in the next, uh, four years, we'd be looking at a total, with these two pieces of equipment and the, the other needs that they need, as far as trucks and, uh, some other apparatuses that are expensive, looking at about three and a half million dollars at today's prices. So, if things go up, they go up, and if they go down, they go down.
That's right, everything, Chris.
That's, yeah, three, three-point-five.
Including what we're getting now.
Right.
Okay.
And so, this, you know, two-point-two is a big chunk of it, um, and, and I really think we could probably save some money on that when we get right down to it, and we, we actually get with the truck manufacturers and, and fine-tune, uh, what we're talking about, but for budgeting purposes, I think we're in the ballpark at two-point-two million, and that's about a three hundred thousand dollar payment for ten years. Uh, we can issue debt for that, you have the authority to do that, you can issue, uh, you know, bonds, and, but I, you can also do a lease purchase to, to company, uh, like we're doing for the HVAC and the electric, uh, consolidation that we're doing, um, that we'll talk about later on in this item, but, um, so I'm just trying to tell you, money's tight. I made the decision, as I stated, to invest our surplus and our growth that we've experienced this year in manpower. And that, as you recall, that's four police officers to be hired, starting in October. We hope, hope to be able to hire them. We'll probably have to send them to school, train them, and, and go through the process like we generally do, the academy, I should say. And, and that takes a little time to onboard those new four employees, but that's a big expense, that's public safety. Out of our total general fund budget, our, our public safety is, is seven million dollars. Out of that sixteen million dollars, seven million of that is just for public safety. And, and that's with a volunteer fire department. If we had, if we had the staff of volunteer fire department for the size of community we have, we'd probably be spending another four million dollars on that. So, these guys are saving us money, and I've heard one council member say that the least we can do is buy them the equipment that they ask for. And, uh, and so, with, with that, I have a clear conscience to say that your option tonight is to direct me to, uh, include in our budget a two-cent tax increase, or to go back and try to find the three hundred thousand dollars out of that six million M&amp;O that I've got to work with. So, I'm all yours.
Can I, Mayor, may I ask Chris a question?
Councilman Allen.
Usually, we have about four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand leftovers at the end of every year, just like we're buying that equipment with tonight. Uh, as long as I've been on here, we've always had a, a pretty good nest egg, that we're trying to pick away what we wanna buy and spend. Don't you think that our budget would be all right with this, like it is?
If, if things continue at the rate they're going, we should see growth continued. But if, for some reason, you have a, a nationwide disaster or something like that, you're gonna be hooked into a ten-year payment and have to be cutting your money somewhere else or going up on tax debt.
Yeah, you'd have to go up on taxes, or you could do a, uh-
You'd be reactive at that point.
You could do a bond or something. But I think we've got money reserved to do this.
Uh, in reserve? No.
Yes, sir. Well, I'm talking about, uh, how much we got in reserve?
Well, you've got a policy to keep twenty-five percent of, of your sixteen million in, in reserve.
Yeah, so we got four million dollars.
You got about four million, yes, sir.
Yeah, but we can't touch it, I understand.
Well, under policy, you change the policy, we can.
Okay.
Your bonding agencies aren't gonna like that, by the way.
If we had to, we would.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking we got, in my opinion, we got enough money without having to cut any overhead, or cut salaries, or any of that stuff, or go up to the taxpayers.
It's all up to y'all.
In two years from now, if we got a problem, we have to, we have to cross that bridge.
But Chris, what is, what is the unrestricted amount?
I don't have that number exact in front of me, but it's about a thirty percent margin, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, can you find that for us, Eva?
Yeah.
She's, she's got her computer back there with her, I bet. But, um, yeah, we, we try to, and that's in our a- annual audit, that number is there. Uh, I know it was a little higher than the twenty, twenty-five percent minimum. But the utility fund was less than what's required, so-
I was gonna say, we were lower on one.
And keep in mind, we're, you know, we're going through the bond rating agencies now for the sewer plant and the water treatment plant, so, um, we, we've got to have some reserves for our bond rating.
When you order these, how much you gotta pay down?
Nothing.
Nothing? And what's the delivery on them?
Well, it depends on, it could be, they may have one available in three months, it may be eighteen months, you don't know. But go ahead, Eva.
So, last year, we ended up at about five million dollars. Uh, right now, we are sitting at, uh, low under seven million, but the year is not over, and we already collected all of our property taxes, so our cash flow is now limited. I just wanna make sure that you knew that.
Yeah.
We've got three million unrestricted?
Yep.
Well, no, that's for operating expenses till the end of the year. That seven million, it, when we surface at the end, we'll, I think we'll have about four million, four and a half. So, those, those two and a half, that two and a half to three million that we're talking about, we have to operate on between now and then. Like she said, all of our general fund revenue, except for sales tax, is pretty well collected for the year.
With sales taxes, what percentage of the budget on the revenue side?
Um, it's about half.
Yeah, it's forty percent.
Is it greater than that?
Yeah, I think it's a little bigger. It's half.
Sixty, forty?
No.
At, at top of my head, I don't know. Next year, it'll be half, yeah.
Seven and a half million dollars, seven and a half million dollars out of a sixteen million dollar budget.
Forty-eight percent.
Well, it kinda sounds like we might have the funds in the reserve to do the fire trucks debt service this first year. But my question for, for Chris is, you know, we talked earlier that our plan to put it on the ballot, we don't have the authority to do.
Right.
And so, um, what would be the process to get it on the ballot? Because we need a more reliable funding source that's separate for the fire department.
Well-
An additional revenue source.
If you-
Increase your tax.
You know, you and I brainstormed on this on the phone today about, uh, initiative from the voters to, uh, change the tax scenario for the sales tax that we have, that's property tax reduction. Uh, you and I were brainstorming about taking a percentage of that and having the voters vote on that, but it would take an initiative from the voters to, to drive that, um, to be on the ballot. So, we, we just can't sit up here and, and unilaterally say, okay, we're gonna propose and put on the ballot for the, for the fire department to, uh, receive part of those tax funds that's currently earmarked for property tax reduction. And I might add, just so everybody knows, the last time I did the calculation was two years ago. If we didn't have our property tax collection the way it's set up, uh, one, well, it'd be, um, one-half of one percent, or just half of a percent, of everything you buy in retail goes towards property tax reduction. And if we didn't have that provision in our, uh, adopted laws, your property tax would by default be around sixty-two cents. Uh, I just want you to see the value of that. We're paying thirty-nine point nine cents on a dollar now. If we didn't have that half-cent sales tax in there, it would be sixty-two cents. So, two cents on a, on a forty-cent tax rate is a whole lot less than what we're talking about on that half-cent sales tax. So, um, long story short, that's an option, I guess, if the voters would drive that bus. Here's, here's my, here's my challenge to you, is if you don't wanna put a tax increase on there-
Just say so.
If you want, if you want me to go back and, and see if I can, I'm gonna find this money. I'm gonna find it. I, I will defund something and, and change the priorities. We will find this money.
Go find it, Chris.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to clear that up, so that we know.
That motion, Mr. Mobley.
All right, the next one, y'all pretty well hammered, uh, already. The next one of that is the annual lease payment expense for the lighting and HVAC. Um, if you'll recall, that's an energy savings program, and we're planning on funding that out of the savings of each department. So, that would be a change to the budget that we talked about at the budget workshop, and I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, and when it gets articulated in there, you'll know what that's all about. Um, other than that, I'm good to go on budget. So, the next page there, the Ava's put together for you, pretty well spells out, line item by line item, what we're talking about doing. If there's any questions, I'd be happy. Right there is the enhanced marketing in your packet, enhanced programming for conference center that we were talking about. Songwriters Festival, Hood County Gun Show, uh, Granbury Phantom, Phantom Gathering, Taste of Granbury, Hood County, Granbury Gaming Gala, Texas Summer Weekly Concert Series. These are some ideas that were vetted among staff and put together on here to give you some ideas of what could be done. I don't think we can do all of them, but there's certainly some opportunity there to, to be using that facility during the week, uh, for other activities. I would like to say that, that, uh, really appreciate our conference center manager, Kyle, uh, he's done a great job for us. He's holding down the fort very well. He's had to hire a lot of staff, and, uh, we're working through that, and we're, we're about ready to hire somebody tomorrow, and, uh, based on what we're doing tonight, we're, we're gonna go ahead and hire our salesperson and, uh, take care of business. And, and I would like to say that we've got a great strategic plan that was put together by Don Anderson, and he, he's here tonight, and we appreciate what he did for us. And, uh, we've already changed the, the logo to the place, as you can see that, that was the first thing that happened within two weeks. It's called Lake Granbury Conference Center now, and, uh, we, we do have our website about ready to go live, and, uh, that's all part of the marketing piece, and so, or the sales piece, let me say that, sales. I gotta get marketing out of my head. Um, but anyway, I'd like to thank Kyle, and Michael and Kyle have worked hard together to, to work on our conference center. End of this month, is the goal.
He just asked what the status of the website is, and we anticipate the end of this month for their very own. That's all, boss.
Chris, my, my question to you, though, is, uh, when staff goes forward with this budget, since the, uh, the 120 was not moved over from, transferred from the BGI to the, uh, what is that, how does that affect that now? How does that affect your, the staff's budget now?
It, it doesn't.
So, that, that's off there now?
So, this was, this was extra compared to what I presented at the budget workshop.
Okay.
And, and this, the attachment to this budget item was these ideas for this more robust activity that we would be doing. Uh, additional funding, let me just read it, so everybody out there can see it. Complete social media management strategy from established marketing firm, Facebook, Twitter, and ad management, true relevant social media ad campaigns, content and brand management support, graphic design support, increased media buying, especially targeted in areas where conferences, conventions are based, Austin, San Antonio, Houston, Fort Worth, Dallas. In the current budget, we do not have the resources to buy in these areas. Google AdWords set up and launched, digital retargeting and setup, management and reporting, video grok, video grok, I don't know what it is.
What's that?
Yeah, well, with the evolution of the digital world, Lake Granberry Conference Center should be producing new custom video every six weeks, uh, YouTube ads set up and reporting, stunning digital photography and TV commercials. That's what we could do with $120,000 in these, in these activities. And that's what was proposed at the budget workshop as well, that, uh, we just didn't know what we could do if we, if we could get any more money. But I don't feel comfortable doing this work with general fund money when I need to find another $300,000 a year for the fire department. And, and after that, we're going to have to hit it again, probably another 18 months, with another fire truck.
Mayor, can I comment on that?
Councilman Couch.
So, if you were wondering why I thought that, that BGI should get a bigger percentage of the 120, or keep a bigger percentage of the 120, it's, when I looked at, when I looked at the proposal of all these things, the vast, vast majority of what's, of what they're saying that they want the money for, um, is what BGI already does. They do the social media, they do the marketing, they do Facebook, Twitter, ad management. I mean, so, I can't, I can't see that it would be a good idea to double, um, to duplicate these, these, uh...
Gary, it's not happening.
I can't say it.
We'd already die.
Okay.
It'll be bad.
No, it's not happening. These are not happening for the conference.
So, at this time, Council, we have discussed, we have discussed the physical, the, uh, the physical year 2018, 19 annual budget for the City of Granberry, and we've received input from the Council and our city manager. So, is there any recommendations or any motion to this? Do you want to make a motion to, for the, for Chris to, uh, go forward with the said budget and work to find money for the, uh, additional fire?
So move.
So, we have a motion from Councilman Allen?
Second.
And a second from Councilperson Mobley. Any more discussion on the budget?
Mayor.
Councilman Corgan?
Last comment, is, as much as members of the fire department out there and the community may not understand individually the true need for the apparatus that we're talking about, being a member of the department, and I hope that I can speak for the other members out there, I would hate for the, the fire department to get a truck and be a, a true detriment to another department. So, all I'm asking is, if it is not possible to make the cuts across the board as stated, I would like the opportunity to revisit the 2-cent tax.
And I think the city manager made it clear, he was going to try, he, he was wanting to find...
No, I get that.
I appreciate that, Greg. Um, and I will second that, Greg. Um, we have one of the lowest tax rates, I'll, I'll be so bold. Um, no one wants to say they were responsible for raising taxes, but...
Well, none of us want to pay any taxes, higher taxes either.
Right, right. But we, we enjoy the lowest tax rate in the region. And if we can't put 2 cents out there to fund our department without sacrificing other departments, then we need to reassess our, our role up here on the council.
Or we do it on commercial property only. Probably pay a big part of that.
So, we had a, we had a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Had it approved, we look forward to, uh, the staff and Chris working to make these things happen.
Can I add one last thing?
Yep, yes, you can.
Thank you. Um, so, we'll be, move forward, we'll be putting our, our budget on the website by the end of this month. Public will have a minimum of 30 days to review it, and then, um, uh, we will, we will figure all this out between now and the end of the month. But we're going to have a, a public hearing in September and need to vote on this, like I said earlier. But the main thing I want you to know is, you can change that budget on the fly after the public hearing, okay? So, um, you don't, just because I put it out there, it doesn't say it's final, all right? That's what I'm trying to say, because there's a lot of people have a conception that I have more authority than I have. And I have a responsibility to put this out there for the public to see it and receive comments from. Ultimately, this is your budget.
Right.
And I want to make that real clear, this is the city council running our city through the budget. Thank you.
So, you get it after a really quick course?
I have to.
Okay, Council, we're going to move on to item number seven, which is to discuss reports from the 2018 Charter Review Commission and determine which charter amendment proposition will be drafted in ordinance to call a special election for November 2018. As you recall, in January 2018, the city council appointed a Charter Review Commission to make recommendations for the changes of the city charter. And the commission completed its review of the charter and submitted its proposed changes to the city attorney for legal review. At the June 19th city council meeting, council directed the Charter Review Commission to reevaluate and provide a potential proposition clarifying the voting body as five council members with a majority vote of the three, and the other potential propositions adding a seventh member or, and giving the mayor authority to vote. The commission did meet on, or will meet, meet on July 12th, and their recommendations will be forwarded to the council as soon as that, and that did happen. Uh, I actually sat in on that meeting there, and I tell you, the commission basically said, you know, the council was provided all the information they needed, that they were requested. They didn't really feel like, uh, playing ping pong with this and going back and forth, making other recommendations, and council, there was other council members there. Uh, there's a lot of truth to that, that's, it's up to us, it's up to us to go ahead and, and, and make those decisions. There's a couple of them, I think we were hung up on, that were the, uh, and we have removed the city secretary one, so that one, I think, is gone, but there's still that, the voting of the, the mayor and, uh, what, what has the affirmative vote. And if we stay at the status quo, which is the number one, one is the one that they highly recommended, that, uh, you would still have the six-member voting, and, uh, you would have the 4-1, 4-2 voting. One of the, one of the commissioners on that committee are here tonight, Mark Gresz, he's here, I think. Is he still here? Yeah, there he is. So, uh, I, I guess if you wanted to direct any questions to, to the commission, he is here?
Mr. Mayor, Bruce Wildley's here.
And Bruce, okay, Bruce Wildley's here too, so, uh, so if you've got questions, uh, between those two folks there, they could answer them, but, but like I said, after I listened to the meeting, they pretty much rolled out and, and give us a good, uh, charter, and, and they reviewed it pretty well, and, uh, I think the council was pretty close on this thing. So, it's basically up to the council now to make that decision, and if there's something on there that the council doesn't even agree with totally, they have that opportunity to make that decision up here. But these are the things that we need to approve, to put on that, to put on the ballot. So, with that, Council, do you have any questions or concerns, or want to talk about any of those items?
Mayor.
Councilman Corgan?
I just, I want to say, I was at the meeting, and it was, Gary had, uh, presented a potential problem with having an even number of votes up here. And I agreed that it could, at some point, be a potential problem. After going to the meeting and hearing what the, the discussion that was had, um, by the, the commission, and the length of time that they spent discussing this very specific issue, uh, which from my understanding was either the majority of an entire meeting, or some of one meeting and some of another meeting, um, which, for the amount of meetings they had, is a significant amount of time to talk about one subject. I personally feel like their recommendation to have the mayor as a voting member is a fine recommendation, and the reason is because regardless of the percentage, which was your concern at the beginning, which I agreed with, the fact is, with six voting members, you still have to have a majority, so there will not, there's not a tie, there's no such thing as a tie, your tie is a fail, and that's how it has to be looked at. So, my point, I am perfectly fine with the recommendations as given, and will be comfortable making a motion whenever the conversation's done to proceed as they are listed out there.
Thank you. Council, any more discussion on these items?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Ryner.
This is just a general comment, because I was in that meeting as well. Thank you so much to that committee, that is a lot of work, tedious, arduous work. So, we greatly appreciate that you read every line of the charter and did the diligence that you did. So, thank you very much for doing that. That's it.
Mayor, I want to thank the board.
Councilman Allen.
Thank you, I want to thank the board also for all their hard work. I said it last time, it's no, nothing against the mayor, he's a good friend of mine, he even, he even bought my dinner this week, so, uh, we're real close. But I just don't think the mayor should be able to vote, it had never been that way in the City of Granberry. And, uh, he is busy doing stuff all the time, and, uh, writing notes, reading the agenda, getting ready for the next motion. He's got his hands full up here. And if it's a tie, he can break it. No tie, he can't break it. And I'm for leaving it like it is.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ryner.
I'm not sure that I agree with Mr. Allen on the way that it's always been is the way that it should be. The mayor is also elected by the people, and I think that he has a right to be up here and vote, he's always involved in the conversation regardless of the vote or not. And I would agree with the committee's recommendation of allowing, keeping the council as it is and having six members in that, allowing the, the mayor to vote. I think he should have been given that right.
Well, he, he does get involved in conversations, and he knew it when he ran, he didn't have a vote, so...
That doesn't mean change is inappropriate sometimes.
I know, I like changes sometimes, we'll see.
And what has changed, Mr. Allen, though, is, is, you say we've done it for years and years, but we've also, for years and years, been describing the affirmative vote as wrong, because two, two attorneys, or three, three attorneys actually looked at that and said, uh, your affirmative vote is four.
Yes, sir.
And so, we have, since then, went with that. So, four, with the count with the, with the mayor voting, doesn't really change anything, we've still got the same proceedings, but you still, now, now you have the 4-2, 4-1 vote.
Well...
It takes four, it takes four to pass it. A, a tie, if you, if you was to have a tie, is, you need to take and take a hard look at it, because even when we had a 3-2 vote, that wasn't real strong for a council, you know? I mean, I would just look at it like, that was, that was basically a fail, and it was at that time, according to our own charter.
Everybody's got their own opinion, that's mine, don't get mad at them, you have...
That was what was, and when you read it, that's exactly the way it is, that's the way it reads, is that...
It says the mayor votes?
No, it says that, right now, it says that it is based off of six votes.
Yeah.
But then it says the mayor doesn't have a vote. So, how do you have an affirmative vote of four when the mayor doesn't have a vote? And I personally think that the mayor should have a vote, just like they're talking to people in the community. I was elected, uh, by the citizens, as well as you were elected by the citizens, to make decisions and to be able to vote on decisions.
Yeah.
And so, it's not that I'm just up here orchestrating the, the meeting and keeping it in line, which, yeah, I have to do that too, but, uh, it's also, I feel like my, uh, to, to the citizens out there, to be able to vote on something, and then to be able to say, that's how I voted.
Yes, sir.
Instead of saying, being neutral on everything.
I don't have no problem with what you're thinking, and I, I have many, many people talk to me in the community also, and said, this never came up until the four-vote deal came up.
Till the what?
Till the four votes, where it took four votes.
Which was discovered through the Charter Review.
Yes, sir, and that's when it came up, if you decided you wanted to vote. Mine counts for five votes, that's all I'll say.
Mayor.
Councilman Couch?
Um, there's been a lot of work done on this, and I appreciate all the efforts of all the people that, uh, contributed. Um, I did ask, or I thought I asked, that there would be an option to go back to the old, the old way we had, had done it, which is three of five. And it's, I don't see it on here.
It's option three.
Option three. Charlie sent that to you, because that was one thing that we did ask him to do.
There's a summary of all that.
I thought I, but the status quo is four votes.
Well, you're on the wrong one.
Well...
Let me show you. It's a, it's a misapplication of the word "status quo."
Yeah.
Charlie told me, he, he used the wrong terminology when he said "status quo." Basically, there are three choices here. One is to continue with five members, give the mayor the right to vote, that, that's what he's calling the status quo, and it remains four of six. A second option would be, give the mayor the right to vote and add another council person. And then the third option is, um, the mayor would not vote, but we would go into the language and say a majority of council members rather than a majority of council as it states now in the charter. So, that would take it back to the three to two without the mayor voting.
Okay.
So, those three options are there.
Okay, well, I, uh, I was looking at status quo as, as four votes, so, um... So, my concern about the ballot is that we're talking about 18 measures to be voted on.
Right.
So, someone gets into the voting booth, do you think they're going to read all these?
You know, I asked that question to Charlie, and Charlie actually, he answered that question and said, yes, they do. I don't know, were you there? He, he actually said, they do. The voters get in there and, and if it's on there, and, you know, they treat that just like a, uh, you know, just like a candidate running, you know? If there's a, there's, uh, things that they, if they want to vote somebody in, or if they want to vote an item in, I mean, there's several things on a ballot, not, not just the council, but there are several things statewide, there's several things, you know, that comes on the ballot, and, uh, they really believe, and he believes that people, especially in the community, because it affects the community, they look at those, each one of those, and they ask around the community before the voting, and they actually, they vote on those.
Well, um...
And thank you.
Well, I, I still have that concern, uh, that we're making this, this fundamental change to our charter, that I think we could, that someone could argue that it's worked really well, uh, for 30 years, or the envy of, of small-town sexes, if not, uh, America. And I've, I like that the mayor is above the fray, usually, um, and he's able to do that when, when he only votes in a tie. I've talked to several people in the community, I think you would consider them pillars of the community, and I asked him this question, I said, how do you think the, the current city council's doing? And there was, there was a, there was a consensus, it was, it was 100%. You guys are working well together, you're, you're getting along better. Um, and I said, well, I, I totally agree with that. And when we discussed this earlier, I was concerned, um, about a high threshold for passing something. And I've evolved in that thought, that I believe that we have this, given this high threshold, that we're forced to work together and get to a consensus. I think that's making us better. I'm not totally convinced that's the right option, but I'm also, I also believe that there's not a rush to change what's currently, uh, the, the... to change what's currently, the, the process. So I would be in favor of option four, which would be keeping it the same, letting the people over the next, I mean, it's, I think it's been about four months or so since we went to the four votes. And I, I can say there's, there's been, I believe there's been a shift in the willingness to work together and accomplish something. So I actually would be in favor of, of leaving it the same that we're currently under the, the rule of.
I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to call Mark to come up here because, you know, uh, and you, and you stated it well because it's going to be left up to the citizens whether or not they want the mayor to vote. I, I personally think that the mayor should have a vote because he is elected by the people out there. But you know, if it goes on the ballot and the citizens out there say, no, we don't want the mayor to vote, then that's what'll come out. That's what will come out and it will come back to status quo then because it will, it won't pass. But if, if it passes, well, I, I would ask Councilman Allen, why don't you want the mayor to vote? Because it's not been that way for 30 years. That's not a good answer. Why don't you want the mayor to vote?
I don't want to.
Why don't you want the mayor to vote?
I didn't even say it, but you asked me. I know whose team you're on here.
Why don't, why, why wouldn't you want the mayor to vote?
Because I know what side, what team you're on. I'm not blind.
Why wouldn't you not want the mayor to vote?
Mr. Mayor.
I just told you.
Councilperson Ryan.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
We are all one team.
Yes, ma'am.
There is no, there are no two teams up here and that's why this is working. Because we all do have an opinion and we make it known and we argue logically and directly and we resolve problems. That's, that makes a team.
I haven't seen any problem with our council.
You just said that you knew the team, whose team he was on. We're all on the same team.
If you had four votes, right now, if Mr. Couch and I vote against anything, it doesn't get passed.
That's actually inaccurate information.
It does get passed.
Use the names.
We've had a various, we've had various issues where people thought things would be voted a certain way and that did not happen. Because the people on this dais think and work through and listen. And we work together to make sure that what we are doing is the right thing for the people. That's how this works. It's, we are all one team. It's not you against me or Greg against me or however you're posing this. We are one team for the people of the city.
Never said we wouldn't.
You just did.
No. I said I know how the mayor would vote.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and have Mark. Thank you. Mark, go ahead. And we're, we're talking about the, the mayor's ability to vote. So if you could kind of give us a little bit of background, what the commissioner and why the commissioner, the commission decided that, if you would please?
Well, I believe that it was pretty unanimous that it didn't make any sense to go to the trouble and expense of, of electing a mayor who then could not vote representing the public. And I, I think probably if you ask any citizen off the street if he knows whether the mayor can vote, they would say certainly they always do. And so it was a logical conclusion for, for us. And with regard to the options that are before you, there was quite a bit of discussion about whether or not it would be necessary to add a, another member to the council to avoid a six-member vote. And there were opinions on both sides. And I believe the feeling of the commission was that a six-member voting council with the mayor voting would work. And if it proved that it didn't work in the long run, then the council could fix the problem with a subsequent charter amendment. But we were pretty well unanimous with regard to the, to the matter of the mayor voting. It just made sense to us.
Thank you, Mark. I'm going to go ahead and let Bruce talk too, since she's here. Kind of give your input on what, what's, Bruce Wadley was another member of the charter review team.
Well, the, the whole discussion about that started with the, the whole, the, the four vote deal. Because it said, I mean, the charter right now, like when you talk about status quo, three-two is not status quo. Y'all, do y'all all agree with that at this point?
Yeah.
The charter says that the city council consists of the mayor and the five councilmen, councilpersons. And, and it says a majority of the council passes, passes something. Okay? When you vote, a majority has to pass. But the council consists of the mayor and the five people. That's six people. A majority of six is four. So we either, if you want to do three-two, then the, then the charter has to be changed anyway to specifically state, and I think that's option four. Is it Chris? Three?
Three.
And, and we really, we didn't really, and I'll get to where how we can, came up with this in a second. We never really considered that. But if, if you want to change the verbiage to say that the council, I mean, you can still have the mayor vote in the, in the event of a tie. And you can say that, that to pass, it's the majority of the council members, not the council. And you understand that the distinction is the council is the mayor and the five councilpersons. So where, when we realized that, and there's, there was an attorney on our group, the city attorney was there, and then the attorney that's kind of guiding us. So we had three attorneys in the room. And, and when first read that, we're going, wait a minute, that's not the way we do it. And so then we start telling them how to fix it. And a point that I kind of brought up was if the mayor is elected by the citizens and if the mayor's vote is, is important in the case of a tie, why is it important all the time? I mean, it's just, if it's important, again, in the case of a tie, it's, it should be important all the time. And, and then we said, well, if there's six people voting, what about a tie? There's no such thing as a tie. A majority is, again, right now, the charter says a majority, it requires a majority to pass. And, and a majority is four out of six. So three-three is a fail. Four-six or four-two passes. And then Gary, I was kind of listening to what you were saying a minute ago. I know I was supposed to talk to a specific person, right?
Yeah.
But about, about doing the four-one, my problem with that is, and I said this the other night, I don't think if, if two people can prevent something out, out of five, then, then the majority doesn't have control anymore. And I've never heard of anything set up where you vote where the, where a minority can fail something. I mean, I've, I've never been on any organization where that would happen. So I, I like what you said about it's, you know, kind of causing people to work better together and stuff. But, but basically if you do, right now, if you do status quo, where it takes four to pass something, but the mayor doesn't vote, then basically two people can control the vote. And that's not the majority. And I just, I, I had a huge issue with that. Any other questions?
Thank you, Bruce. So counsel, I mean, and I'll say it again, if it went out to the, the public and the public said they, they want to see the mayor voting, then I think that's what we should do up here. If the public chose that they didn't want the mayor to vote, then they would definitely speak, as, as we put it out there on these propositions, because it would be something that they would be looking at. And Bruce made a good statement there. I mean, if the mayor's vote's good on a tie, it should be good anywhere. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Orville.
You get there.
I get there.
It's, it, it was my understanding that assuming we, we vote tonight to move forward with, with the current proposition as it's written.
Proposition.
Uh, which would be to allow the mayor to vote and you would need for, to pass something. If the voters failed that and chose to deny that proposition, that it would then automatically revert and the language would be changed so that it would actually go back to a three-two and the mayor not voting. That was my understanding from, from Mr. Zach. I don't, if I'm incorrect on that, then.
Is that correct? We can change the charter?
You can't change it more than every two years.
Yeah. It's charter review once every two years.
Right.
That's the last time a proposition we could have put out for vote.
I guess what Greg's saying though is if the proposition fails there and we still have verbiage in there that we would like to change, is there that possibility to change the verbiage on a certain charter?
Well, I guess it was my understanding that he was saying you could write it in a way.
Well, I think what you're getting at is options.
Right.
If, if, if you don't like A, then look at B. And if you don't like B, then look at C. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, yes, essentially.
Yes, a proposition can be drafted that way, but it, in the end, could be chaos because what if you have multiple propositions that, that pass with the same number of votes?
Right. He had talked about that up here. And that's what I'm, that's why I'm asking. I'm, I'm wanting to get clarity. Because it was my understanding that he was saying if essentially you have two propositions that say two different things on the same subject and they both pass, that it would be whichever passes with the greater majority that goes into effect.
True.
Okay.
Unless you have a tie.
What?
Then the mayor votes, right?
There's always that.
My, my personal opinion on that is what, what's going into these propositions, these measures going out is left to the council.
Right.
Ultimately. And I think you guys should just decide right now what you want to put out.
Good. I've, I've, in my opinion, you know.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Ryan.
My, my last statement.
That's all right.
Uh, I, we up here on this dais work for the people and I think that we ought to give the people the option to allow the mayor to vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I would agree with most of what was set up here. I'd like to thank Mark and Bruce both for your efforts. I know you guys put in a lot of time. The thing that disturbs me is when we say something's worked for 30 years. If that's the case, why did we go through this process? Why did we go through and dissect this? And if, and if you saw our packet, you'd see page after page after page that's eliminated from the charter. I think that's beautiful. That means that the whole world is streamlined. But to say that we've never done it that way and so we shouldn't do it going forward, then I would ask, why do we, why do we come up here every first and third Tuesday of the month? Why does Congress meet? And somebody would say, why in the heck do they meet anyway? But why, why does the legislature and the executive branches, why do they even get together and do anything if we just say, this is the way it is and we're going to do the same thing going forward? I don't know that that makes a whole lot of sense. So, and I too think if you go out and poll 10 people on the street today, at least nine of them will think this, this man right here votes. And I, and I can assure you of that. Because most people don't pay attention to what comes up here. Now, we'll have plenty of social media that, that will draw attention to us, but I don't know that a lot of those folks understand really what goes on up here. I think most voters will be surprised if this passes and we put it on the ballot. Again, the ultimate decision is the voter. But I think most people would probably vote for it because they think it's already in place. Not that it's a major change. And so that's my, that's my position on this and I'll leave it at that.
And I will, I will express on that that, you know, we, there's 20 propositions. That charter, when they reviewed this, they, they, they made the statements that our charter was broken. Their, our charter needed cleaned up. And that's what they did. They did. And I heard every council member thanked them for the hard work they did. And I too have thanked them because they were challenged with a charter that was, it was, it was in bad shape. And that's why you're seeing 20, I think it's 19, 20, 20 propositions on here. Those are things that need to be fixed. So what we've been doing for a long time, obviously needed fixed. And that's what we're trying to do here with this charter to clean it up and to make it to where, you know, it's for the council and for the, for the citizens out there. Counsel, any more discussion?
I would like to just add one comment that it was very well identified that our city charter was a lot of copy and paste from the local government code related to general law cities back when it was created. General law cities have six elected officials and the mayor only votes in effect of a tie. And that's where this tradition came. Also, general law cities only require three-two votes when they have six elected people sitting up here. And, and, and when you go to a home rule charter, you have the ability to change and improve that scenario. And what happened was the, the transition from the general law city to the home rule city introduced the council manager form of government as contrasted by the mayor council form of government. And where the mayor council form of government, so like the city of Houston currently has, has had historically, the mayor has an office. He has 24/7 job responsibilities administratively and operationally. And we do not have that here. Our mayor has, has office, but he doesn't maintain office hours. He can come and go as he pleased. He has nothing to do with the day-to-day operations of the city. His job is to facilitate this meeting. And it's in that document that I sent y'all today from TML that, that kind of talks about the, the council manager form of government in home rule cities and the limitations on the mayor's power. You know what? Y'all adopt and appoint, uh, board members to different boards as a group. And under a general law city, guess who does that?
Mayor.
That's the mayor. So y'all took that feature for, or when they drafted the, the bylaws or the city charter, they took that feature out of the textbook and said, the whole council does that. But yet they limited the mayor's ability to be able to vote. So they took away something that he did in the home rule city and, and still proposed that he move forward or she. And let's, let's get over the personality. What we're talking about here is for the future, not about now, not about today. It's about tomorrow and the future and the people that are going to follow after us, what we're supposed to be doing. If y'all, if the citizens don't want the mayor to vote, they will tell them. We don't want the mayor to vote. I've heard it from a citizen today. I don't want the mayor to vote. I said, well, if it comes up, you'll know how to vote, you know? You know what you want to do. And that's just the way it is. But you're talking about voting tonight to put something on a ballot. You're not talking about making it happen. It's still up to the voters to decide what you're going to do. And you know what? I came to work at this city with this system the way it is and I can continue with the way this thing is. So you don't have to change it for me. I'm not talking about me here. I'm talking about you as a city, looking forward, taking care of what needs to be done administratively in the future. Allow the voters to, to continue to shape the city charter however you want. If you don't do anything, go with option four, like he said, don't put anything on the ballot related to this. So you can do that too. But if you, if you're going to go with an option, don't have, well, if you don't like this option, vote for that option. You, you as a board or council needs to hone in, like Jeremy said, and make a choice, put it on the ballot or not put it on the ballot.
Uh, Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
Um, can you clarify something for me?
All right.
So is this going to be an up and down vote on each option?
No. I would like to go ahead. I mean, you could do it whichever way you want, but I know everybody's had an opportunity to read all these. And if you want to make a motion to accept all these propositions, one through 20, as said, and I think you'd have to identify which one you want to go through on that particular one. Because that, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, that's the only one that has three options on it?
No, actually, it isn't propositions. It's just the mayor to vote.
I know. That's what I'm saying. You, we could go and make a motion for these and make an exception to the mayor's vote, which, which one you want to go.
If you want to exclude that one.
Right, right. So that's where we're at on these. We're not going to go through unless you want to do that.
No, I thought.
Because you've had an opportunity to read all these.
We could get the, we could get the stuff out of the way that we all agree on.
Well, we need to do them all together. I mean, that's one of them. The mayor voting is a proposition also.
Yeah.
And that's the only one that we are hung up on how we want that one to read. And so if we determine how they, they want to read, you can make that motion to put these propositions. put these propositions and the one for the mayor to vote, one, two, three.
Okay.
Basically.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
But to be clear, we're only, we're only choosing to allow the voters to be able to vote on this.
Right.
So we're not, we're not saying what's right and what's wrong.
We're not approving the charter.
Do we allow the voters to, do we give the voters enough credit to figure this stuff out? That's the way I look at it.
Well, that, and that's the question I ask, and Charlie's been around this for a long time, and he, he was pretty happy when he said, "They will vote." Now, there's some down through here that maybe some of them don't really understand, but hopefully they'll get out and do their due diligence, and they'll ask a council member, they'll ask somebody, "What does this really mean?", before I go to the polls and vote. That's why you have a, a pretty lengthy time to go to the polls, and, and you have the things out there that it will appear for the citizens to look at, and be able to review these, and to, I mean, i- if they wanna rally against, and, and have meetings on certain ones, they may wanna do that. Whatever they choose to do on these propos, on these propositions here, that's what they can do.
Well, they come back, it'll come back to us after they vote, and then we can add takeaway of whatever we want to. First, where they vote on it's done.
Whenever they vote on them, and, and Jeremy highlighted that, whenever they vote, if they pass them, then that's the, that's in the charter. If they don't pass it, then whatever was there before remains.
Mayor, I, I like that proposition three, I believe. And I'll put that in form of a motion.
You, you're wanting to make a motion?
Yes.
For the whole...
I believe it's proposition three. Or option three.
Option three. Here's a summary of it on the, from that email, on the message. Option one is the charter commission recommends. Option two is add a council member in the mayor vote. Option three is to remain five councilpersons with the mayor voting only in case of a tie. That's three. That's two. That's when I make the motion.
So you, so I've got a motion from Councilman Allen to, and I'm guessing, okay, are you most, making a motion for all the said propositions and number three for the mayor to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I have a second? So that motion fails for lack of a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt the charter review commission's, uh, recommendations as presented, uh, with option one, giving credit to the voters that they are smart enough and will do, do their due diligence in researching this and making their decision. I, I don't see where we can take that from them at this point.
So we have a motion for the, to, uh, to approve the propositions as stated, and using number one for the mayor's vote.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilperson Reiner. Any more discussion on these propositions, counsel? Councilperson Corbin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner, Councilperson Reiner, how do you vote?
Aye.
So this fails.
Mayor.
Hang on. Hang on.
We have, you were gonna have to put this on the next agenda, and everyone's gonna have to go through this packet, and you're gonna have to go through one by one.
So that fa, that fails?
The next agenda, the next agenda is a, you know, ordinance for a call on a special election. It's the timeline.
So we, well, we could do that, but I mean, you got two options here. You can recall the motion, or we can have a special, because this has to go on the ballot.
Mayor, I have a motion.
Councilman Al, Councilman Couch.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve option number two, which adds, um, a seat...
Okay, Mr. Couch, we did this before. It's already failed, we can't make another motion. It's failed.
We've got two votes. There's vote on, on...
No, the, the first one, we didn't have a motion. It failed, it failed because of lack of a motion, there was no motion, so we still needed a motion. We made the motion, and we, it, that, that motion failed for lack of a second. The second one, we got the motion because we got a second, but the votes failed. So it is dead now. But we need to come up with some time when we can do this now, when we can get these propositions on, which would be a special, right?
Special, yeah.
And so we need to discuss, or at a further, at a future date, what we're gonna do.
And my suggestion is we take the proposition by proposition.
And we can do that. We can do that. We can take it.
It's going on and it's not...
But not tonight. So, that food for thought, when you come back, or when we have a special meeting to do this, then we're gonna have to decide how we wanna do it, and to get an affirmative, whatever, you know, what we're gonna put on the ballots.
It's gonna have to be before the next meeting.
Before the next, that's when it's gonna be a special. Moving on to the next agenda item is a second reading for an ordinance granting Tri-County Electric Company and Corporation an electric power franchise to use the public right-of-way of the city of Granbury. And I'm gonna just turn this over to Chris, 'cause he's probably just gonna read this one more time for us, 'cause that is what we're required to do. And if council has any more questions on this, they can discuss them.
This is the second, this, the reading, I can't remember which number it is.
Just a second, just a second.
It's a second. An ordinance granting to Tri-County Electric Cooperative, Inc., its successors and assigns an electric power franchise to use the present and future streets, alleys, highways, public easements, public ways, and other public property, public right-of-ways of Granbury, Texas, providing for the repeal of all power franchise ordinances to Tri-County Electric Cooperative, Inc., its predecessors and assigns, providing for compensation therefore, providing for effective date and a term of said franchise, providing for written acceptance of this franchise, and finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public.
Thank you, Chris, for that reading. Counsel, you had the, is that right, David? It's a second reading, right? That's, you had the second reading now? So if there's no other discussion on this ordinance? That reading is set. At this time, I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened into open session, and all the members are present, the city council will go into closed session pursuant to the provision of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in these following sections, section deliberation regarding economic development, section 551 071, consultation with your attorney, and section 551 072, deliberation regarding real property. We will go back into executive session. As reconvened into open session, there was no action taken in executive session. Counsel, are there any more discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider item number seven of tonight's agenda for the next council meeting.
We have a motion to reconsider item number seven for the next council meeting. Do we have a second?
Is that August the first?
We're not talking about the date, we're talking about the reconsideration right now.
Second.
I have a second, my councilperson, uh, Reiner. Any more discussion, counsel?
Mayor, I'm a little bit confused, as usual.
You what?
I'm a little bit confused. Was, we're gonna have that on August?
We're gonna, I'm gonna make that after we, after we vote on this, I'm gonna turn that over to Carla, and we'll get the date. We're not voting on a date right now.
Okay, but it's the first meeting in August.
It's a special meeting. It's not, it's not the council. It'll be a special meeting.
We're voting on the reconsideration.
We haven't scheduled that yet.
We haven't scheduled it yet, because we haven't reconsidered it yet. We've got a motion and a second.
Okay.
To reconsider. No more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. I will now, uh, direct Carla, our city secretary, to set up that meeting on, uh, dates provided from Chris from the council for a special meeting. Counsel, any more discussion? If no more discussion, counsel is adjourned.